Mr. Harvath, I'd like to make a motion to move back into open session.
There's a movement second to move back to open session. Ms. Harvath, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler? Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Barner?
To, Ms. Barner. Okay, I'm here. You're ready to start.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, council members. This evening, you will hear legislation for the appointment of an Aurora resident as Director of Personnel and Chief of Staff, Karen Aldridge of Hawthorne, whom you just met in our executive session. Thank you for your consideration. On April 28, which is a Tuesday, Susan Wilicki, the Education and Communications Administrator for the Ohio Ethics Commission, will be at Aurora City Hall to conduct an ethics training session at 3:00 PM in council chambers, and all members of council have been invited to attend. And just so you know, the Law Director and I have been talking about this for probably a year. Ethics, public officer ethics were ingrained in me 20 years ago when I first entered public service, and I just think it's very important for my department directors and assistant directors, as well as myself, to continuously be updated and refreshed on this very important issue. The annual report for 2014 was printed and mailed to residents on April 3. Additional copies are available at the reception area in City Hall, and it's also been posted on the city's website at www.AuroraOH.com. May 11 through the 16th is Fill a Bag, Feed a Family Week in Aurora, sponsored by Food to Share. Food bags will be dropped off at homes, and residents are asked to fill one or more bags with non-perishable, non-expired food items, paper products, and detergents. You can leave your bags on your doorstep on Saturday, May 16, and volunteers will pick them up after 1:00 PM. You can also drop the bags off at the VOA on North Aurora Road, and additional information will be coming to your home soon. Since our last meeting, I've met with a number of residents and attended the chamber's business after hours at the Aurora Inn, the Portage Summit Mayor's Managers and Service Directors' meeting, and the Aurora Shores Homeowners Association meeting, at which the primary topic of conversation was Aurora Lake Road. I visited Freedom Health with Jack Burge and representatives from Portage Development Board, recited the Pledge of Allegiance with the American Legion for Fox 8 News, and was the guest speaker at the Cleveland Metropolitan Bar Association Women's Group Luncheon. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the mayor at this point? Seeing none. Law Director, Mr. DePiero?
A couple of brief, Mr. President, a couple of brief notes. First of all, with regard to ordinance 21537, the noise ordinance, there is another amendment, a small amendment. It occurred to the chief and I that issues with regard to barking dogs are already covered in 61806. It's a very well-written ordinance, so we've deleted any reference to dog, barking dog issues in this ordinance, but they are covered in another part of the code. I've already discussed the combined health district changes in the community of the whole. In addition, I've also talked about the easements that you'll be seeing coming forward as part of the city's connectivity plan. I haven't answered any questions.
Are there any questions for the Law Director at this point? All right, seeing none, you have a council, President's report in front of you. Council has asked to please support a motion to add ordinances 2015-058 through ordinances or ordinance 2015-064, which is a result of the executive session. So I'll ask for that motion.
Second.
We have a movement second to add to the agenda. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes. Ordnance 2015-032 is postponed. Ordnance 2015-033 is from the committee of the whole and is on third reading. It's an ordinance accepting for dedication Shannon Place, which is part of Hawthorne subdivision Phase 5C for recording as a public street in the city of Aurora. It's on third reading.
Can I make a motion?
We have a movement second to postpone. Any questions? Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Ordnance 2015-032 is postponed.
Ordnance 2015-033 is from the committee of the whole and is on third reading. It's an ordinance declaring a surplus and unnecessary property listed on the attached exhibit, which is not required for the operation of the city, authorizing the mayor to advertise these items for property sale via auction on the grounds that it is surplus, obsolete, unnecessary, and otherwise not required for the operation of the city, and this is on third reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a movement second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes. Ordnance 2015-032 is postponed. Ordnance 2015-033 is from the committee of the whole and is on third reading. It's an ordinance declaring a surplus and unnecessary property listed on the attached exhibit, which is not required for the operation of the city, authorizing the mayor to advertise these items for property sale via auction on the grounds that it is surplus, obsolete, unnecessary, and otherwise not required for the operation of the city, and this is on third reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a movement second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Ordnance 2015-033 is adopted.
Ordnance 2015-035 is from the committee of the whole and is on third reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with American Fireworks in the amount of $17,500 to perform the city's July 4 fireworks program, taking the necessary funds from the Recreation Fund Number 78 and the Parks and Recreation Sponsorship Number 30, and this is on third reading.
Move to adopt.
Ms. Cudley?
We have a movement second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes. Ordnance 2015-033 is adopted. Ordnance 2015-035 is from the committee of the whole and is on third reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with American Fireworks in the amount of $17,500 to perform the city's July 4 fireworks program, taking the necessary funds from the Recreation Fund Number 78 and the Parks and Recreation Sponsorship Number 30, and this is on third reading.
Move to adopt.
Ms. Cudley?
We have a movement second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Ordnance 2015-035 is postponed.
Ordnance 2015-033 is from the committee of the whole and is on third reading. It's an ordinance declaring a surplus and unnecessary property listed on the attached exhibit, which is not required for the operation of the city, authorizing the mayor to advertise these items for property sale via auction on the grounds that it is surplus, obsolete, unnecessary, and otherwise not required for the operation of the city, and this is on third reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a movement second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes. Ordnance 2015-032 is postponed. Ordnance 2015-033 is from the committee of the whole and is on third reading. It's an ordinance declaring a surplus and unnecessary property listed on the attached exhibit, which is not required for the operation of the city, authorizing the mayor to advertise these items for property sale via auction on the grounds that it is surplus, obsolete, unnecessary, and otherwise not required for the operation of the city, and this is on third reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a movement second to adopt. Any questions? Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes. Ordnance 2015-032 is postponed. Ordnance 2015-033 is from the committee of the whole and is on third reading. It's an ordinance declaring a surplus and unnecessary property listed on the attached exhibit, which is not required for the operation of the city, authorizing the mayor to advertise these items for property sale via auction on the grounds that it is surplus, obsolete, unnecessary, and otherwise not required for the operation of the city, and this is on third reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a movement second to adopt. Any questions? Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Ordnance 2015-033 is adopted.
Ordnance 2015-036 is from the committee of the whole and is on third reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Section 457 Deferred Compensation Plan with Praxton Hawkset Financial Group to offer city employees an additional deferred compensation plan. This is on third reading.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a movement second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2015-037 is amended.
Move to adopt.
We have a movement second to adopt as amended. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, ordinance 2015-037 is amended.
Move to adopt.
We have a movement second to adopt as amended. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, ordinance 2015-037 is adopted.
Mr. DePiero, thanks for all your help on this. It's been a long time coming. Ordnance 2015-040 is from the committee of the whole and is on second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to retain the legal services of Bricker and Eckler pursuant to the terms set forth in the attached engagement letter, and this will go on the third reading. Ordnance 2015-041 is from the committee of the whole and is on second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to retain the legal services of Ogletree, Deacons, Nash, Smoke, and Stewart, PC pursuant to the terms set forth in the attached engagement letter, and this also will go on the third reading. Ordnance 2015-042 is from the committee of the whole and is on second reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Insight Advisory Group LLC substantially in the form attached hereto in the amount not to exceed $10,000 for consulting services in connection with the mixed-use development district, taking the necessary funds from the general fund, and this will go on the third reading. Ordnance 2015-043 is from the committee of the whole and is on second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2015 Ford F-150 truck from Liberty Ford for use by the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost of $22,647.38 less the trade-in allowance of $5,800 for a 2003 Chevrolet 1500 truck currently owned by the city for a net cost of $16,847.38, taking the necessary funds from the Capital Improvement Fund Number 60, and declaring emergency in order to take possession of the truck prior to the summer season. This will go on the third reading. Ordnance 2015-044 is from planning. It's an ordinance approving the final plat for Barrington Phase 5B, an extension of Club Drive, which is zoned PD, planned development, and declaring emergency in order to allow the project to commence at the beginning of the construction season, and this will go on the third reading. Ordnance 2015-045 is from the committee of the whole and it is on second reading. It's an ordinance adopting revised ward boundaries within the city of Aurora, which are further described on the map, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, and declaring emergency in order to have the ward boundaries in place prior to the November 2015 election. And again, we have a public hearing set for April 27 at 7:00. This will go on the third reading. Ordnance 2015-053 is from the committee of the whole, and it's an ordinance authorizing the finance director to delete and close Fund 31 FES Community Grant, Fund 61 Heavy Equipment Replacement, Fund 62 Sale of Equipment, and Fund 64 Building Maintenance, as the funds are no longer utilized and have no cash balances, and declaring emergency so the funds can be closed by May 31, 2015. This will go on the second reading. Ordnance 2015-054 is from the committee of the whole and is on first reading. It's an ordinance withdrawing the community reinvestment area tax abatement granted to Portfolio, Portfolio, Portfolio Limited Partnership, which was authorized by Ordnance 2007-162 and further extended by Ordnance 2011-11, and declaring emergency to properly terminate the agreement, and this will go on the second reading. Ordnance 2015-055 is from the committee of the whole. It's on first reading. It's an ordinance withdrawing the community reinvestment area tax abatement granted to Aurora Dental Associates, which was authorized by Ordnance 2011-163, and declaring emergency to properly terminate the agreement, and this will go on the second reading. Ordnance 2015-056 is from the committee of the whole and is on first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the payment of consulting fees in the amount of $5,000 to Economic Development Services for consulting services in connection with the audit and collection of an underpayment of $26,832.26 from AT&amp;T for cell tower, for AT&amp;T for cell tower lease, rental fees at the north water tank, water tower, appropriating the necessary funds from the Water Fund Number 70, and this will go on the second reading. Ordnance 2015-057 is from city council. It's on first reading. It's an ordinance approving and adopting the current replacement pages of the Aurora codified ordinances as prepared by Walter H. Drain Company and verified by the clerk of council, and declaring emergency in order to comply with current state law. We're asking for suspension.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a movement second to suspend. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Any comments from the public? Seeing none?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a movement second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
No motion carried.
Move to second.
We have a movement second to adopt. Any comments from the public? Seeing none? Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Gandella?
Yes.
Mr. Hattler?
Yes.
Mr. Harvath?
Yes.
Ordnance 2015-059 is from the committee of the whole and is on first reading.
It's an ordinance amending Exhibit A to Aurora Code of Ordinances, Chapter 161, Employees Generally, to reflect changes in the compensation for the individuals listed on the attached
And the Parks and Recreation sponsorship number thirty, this is on third reading.
Move to adopt.
Move to approve.
We have a move in second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero three five is adopted. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero three six is from the Committee of the Holland is on third reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a section four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan with Prax and Hawkset Financial Group to offer city employees an additional deferred compensation plan, this on third reading.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a move in second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance two thousand fifteen zero three seven is amended.
Move to adopt.
Second. We have a move in second to adopt as amended. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance two thousand fifteen zero three seven is amended.
Move to adopt.
Second. We have a move in second to adopt as amended. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance two thousand fifteen zero three seven is adopted. Mr. DePiro, thanks for all your help on this. So, long time coming. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero four zero is from the Committee of the Holland is on second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to retain the legal services of Booker and Eckler, pursuant to the terms set forth in the attached engagement letter, and this will go on the third reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero four one is from the Committee of the Holland is on second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to retain the legal services of Ogletree, Deacons, Nash, Smoke, and Stewart, P.C., pursuant to the terms set forth in the attached engagement letter, and this also will go on the third reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero four two is from the Committee of the Holland is on second reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Insight Advisory Group LLC substantially in the form attached hereto in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars for consulting services in connection with the mixed-use development district, taking the necessary funds from the general fund, and this will go on the third reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero four three is from the Committee of the Holland is on second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor, authorizing the purchase of a two thousand fifteen Ford F-150 truck from Liberty Ford for use by the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, less the trade-in allowance of fifty-eight hundred dollars for a two thousand three Chevrolet fifteen hundred truck currently owned by the city for a net cost of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, taking the necessary funds from the capital improvement fund number sixty, and declaring emergency in order to take possession of the truck prior to the summer season. This will go on the third reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero four four is from planning. It's an ordinance approving the final plat for Barrington Phase Five B, an extension of Club Drive, which is Zoned PD Plan Development, and declaring emergency in order to allow the project to commence, commence at the beginning of the construction season, and this will go on the third reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero four five is from the Committee of the Holland is on second reading. It's an ordinance adopting revised ward boundaries within the city of Aurora, which are further described on the map, which is attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, and declaring emergency in order to have the ward boundaries in place prior to the November two thousand fifteen election. And again, we have a public hearing set for April twenty-seventh at seven o'clock. This will go on the third reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five three is from the Committee of the Holland. It's an ordinance authorizing the finance director to delete and close Fund Thirty-One FES Community Grant, Fund Sixty-One Heavy Equipment Replacement, Fund Sixty-Two Sale of Equipment, and Fund Sixty-Four Building Maintenance, as the funds are no longer utilized and have no cash balances, and declaring emergency so the funds can be closed by May thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. This will go on the second reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five four is from the Committee of the Holland is on first reading. It's an ordinance withdrawing the community reinvestment area tax abatement granted to Portfolio, Portfolio, Portfolio Limited Partnership, which was authorized by ordinance two thousand seven one sixty-two, and further extended by ordinance two thousand eleven eleven, and declaring emergency to properly terminate the agreement, and this will go on the second reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five five is from the Committee of the Holland. It's on first reading. It's an ordinance withdrawing the community reinvestment area tax abatement granted to Aurora Dental Associates, which was authorized by ordinance two thousand eleven one sixty-three, and declaring emergency to properly terminate the agreement. This will go on the second reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five six is from the Committee of the Holland is on first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the payment of consulting fees in the amount of five thousand dollars to Economic Development Services for consulting services in connection with the audit and collection of, of, an underpayment of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents from AT&amp;T for cell tower, for AT&amp;T for a cell tower lease, rental fees at the north water tank, water tower, appropriating the necessary funds from the water fund number seventy, and this will go on the second reading. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five seven is from City Councilance on first reading. It's an ordinance approving and adopting the current replacement pages of the Aurora codified ordinances as prepared by Walter H. Drain Company and verified by the Clerk of Council, and declaring emergency in order to comply with current state law. We're asking for suspension.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a move in second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Any comments from the public? Seeing none?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a move in second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Yes.
Or, ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five seven is adopted. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five eight is from the Committee of the Holland is on first reading. It's an ordinance amending Exhibit A to Aurora Code of Ordinances, Chapter One Sixty-One, Employees Generally, to reflect changes in the compensation for the individuals listed on the attached schedule, and order place those newly hired individuals listed on the attached schedule on Exhibit A at the compensation specified for them, proving such compensation and declaring emergency. Mayor's asked for a suspension.
Second.
We have a move in second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no motion carried.
Move.
Second.
We have a move in second to adopt. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five eight is adopted. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five nine is from the Committee of the Holland is on first reading. It's an ordinance accepting the easement substantially in the form attached hereto from Glazer Aurora Properties LLC for the purpose of constructing a sidewalk, and declaring emergency in order to complete the project prior to the winter season. The mayor's asked for a suspension.
Second.
We have a move in second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a move in second to adopt. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero five nine is, is adopted. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero six zero is from the Committee of the Holland is on first reading. It's an ordinance selecting the bid of and awarding a contract to American HVAC as the best bid, rejecting all other bids, authorizing the mayor to enter into a one-year contract with American HVAC for the two thousand fifteen maintenance of heating and cooling systems for the city buildings in the amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, and having the option to renew the contract for a second and third year in accordance with the attached bid amounts, taking the necessary funds from the general fund number one, and declaring emergency as the current maintenance contract expired in March two thousand fifteen. The mayor's asked for a suspension.
Second.
We have a move in second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is carried.
Second.
We have a move in second to adopt. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero six zero is adopted. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero six one is from the Committee of the Holland is on first reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GPD Group in the amount of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars to provide engineering services for Shawnee Trail Water Main Replacement Project, taking the necessary funds from the water fund number seventy, and declaring emergency in order to complete the project in two thousand fifteen. The mayor's asked for a suspension.
So moved.
We have a move in second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a move in second to adopt. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Buck?
Yes.
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 Yes. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero six one is adopted. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero six two is from the Committee of the Holland is on first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a two thousand fifteen Ford F-350 truck with plow from Liberty Ford for the use of the Pop, Parks and Recreation Department at a cost of thirty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents, less the trade-in allowance of thirteen hundred dollars for a two thousand four F-350 truck currently owned by the city for a net cost of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents, taking the necessary funds from the capital improvement fund number sixty, and declaring emergency in order to take possession of the truck prior to the summer season. Mayor's asked for a suspension.
Second.
We have a move in second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried.
Second.
We have a move in second to adopt. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero six two is adopted. Ordinance two thousand fifteen zero six three is from the Committee of the Holland is on first reading. It's an ordinance selecting the bid of and awarding a contract to CJ Ready Serve Incorporated for the two thousand fifteen cleaning of city visit, city buildings as the best responsive and responsible bidder, rejecting all other bids, authorizing the mayor to enter into a one-year contract with CJ Ready Serve Incorporated, with the adoption to renew the contract for the second and third year pursuant to the pricing on the attached exhibit, taking the necessary funds from the general fund number one, the water fund number seventy, sewer number seventy-two, and Parks and Recreation number seventy-eight. Funds and declaring emergency as the current cleaning contract has expired, the mayor's asked for a suspension.
Second.
We have a move in second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried.
Second.
We have a move in second to adopt. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.